Call this meeting. We could all write in for the pledge of allegiance. Let's leave the Maxwell. Lead us through the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As the movement of the flag of the state of Mexico, does it give us a whole perfect friendship among united cultures?
All right, at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written. So move under Stradling, second maximum. Roll call vote, McWilliams, aye. Ms. Maxwell.
Aye.
Ms. Stradling.
Aye.
All right. The board is meeting today for a personnel hearing. At this time, I will entertain a motion to close the meeting for the purpose of limited personnel matters to conduct a personal hearing. So move under Stradling, second maximum. And roll call vote. McWilliams, aye. Maxwell, I'm straddling, aye.
Mr. Connor, you have an indication, you want me to be open, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay. And the employees' request for an open hearing will be honored despite the board's vote to close the meeting. At this time, I will entertain a motion to delegate to its counsel, Mr. Andrew Sanchez, the authority to assist the board in resolving any legal issues which may arise during the hearing, including any pre-hearing motions or disputes, objections to evidence, or other legal questions or issues with which either party needs address. Is it, can I get a motion? Motion, Maxwell. Second. Second, under Stradling. Roll call vote. McWilliams, aye. Ms. Maxwell.
Aye.
Starling.
Aye.
All right.
Applause. Thank you. The Board of Education for Farming to Municipal Schools is meeting today in a quasi-judicial capacity to hear proceedings in the termination of Casey Conrad, non-certified employee of the school district. This will be an informal hearing. Following procedures, however, will be followed. Presentation by administrative counsel, Ms. Hannah Kohler. On behalf of the superintendent to establish just cause for the termination of Mr. Conrad. Presentation by Mr. Conrad, you're not being represented by anybody with Mr. Conrad?
No, sir, I didn't know that was available to me.
Presentation by Mr. Conrad on behalf of himself, that just cause does not exist for termination. Each party will have an opportunity to cross-examine question or clarify statements presented by the outgoing party. Each party may present a brief, concrete statement in no more than five minutes. Questions or clarifications by the Board of Education may be presented at any time. Administrator counsel may offer such rebuttal evidence as she deems relevant. At the end of the presentation, each party may present a brief closing statement in no more than five minutes. In accordance with statute, there will be, well, actually, there is going to be an official recording because it's going to be just like any other court, any other board meeting, as it's open to the public. At the conclusion of these procedures, the board may deliberate upon the presentations. The board shall advise each party's decision within five working days' time limit or they, or at the conclusion of the hearing. At this point, is it? Ms. Kohler, do you need to make, would you like to make an open statement? You may proceed.
Hold on, sir. I do have an objection that Cody Deal gave me the illusion that I was only allowed one person to accompany me here, and he has two for his counsel. I'm just saying that the parameters of the, of the meeting are already being, he's got more than I, that he gave me permission to have at this hearing. He's got a legal counsel, and he also has an assistant, I'm assuming. I was just told that I was only allowed one person to come to the hearing by, by Mr. Deal.
Well, who would you like else to be with you?
Well, no, no, but if I'm only allowed one, and he's only allowed one, that, that's how I.
These are actually my witnesses as well, so I've invited them to sit at the table with us.
Okay. That's fine, I did not know that, I thought it was a legal assistant.
Oh, if you're talking about Ms. Jins, she is my parent.
Okay, yeah, well, that, that's two, so I'm just letting it know, be known that, that I had stricter parameters of observance of this, of this hearing.
Well, the letter says that you could be accompanied by one, by somebody of your choosing, so if, if you would like somebody else to be present with you at the table, I have no objection.
But it was only referenced as one.
Okay. Understand, thank you. Member student is calling.
Thank you.
For our members, thank you for your time here today. We're here today regarding the superintendent's decision to terminate Mr. Casey Conrad's employment from Farmington Municipal Schools. Mr. Conrad has engaged in how the stat has made him unfit to work on our children's school premises. Today, you'll be presented with evidence that shows the superintendent had just caused to terminate Mr. Conrad's employment at the Farmington Municipal Schools. Specifically, you will hear witness testimony from numerous individuals describing how in January of this year, Mr. Conrad offered four of his coworkers cannabis on school property during school hours. While I'm not here to tell you about the legality of this conduct, what I am here to tell you is that offering illicit substances to anyone on public school property is something the superintendent takes very seriously. And importantly for us today, offering illicit substances on public school campuses violates numerous school policies, including policy G dash zero seven five zero, which states that employees shall avoid conduct connected with official duties that is unfair, improper, illegal, or gives the appearance of being improper or illegal. Mr. Conrad has reviewed this policy and all ethics policies ever since his employment began in 2017. Notably, less than a year before, Mr. Cam, excuse me, Mr. Conrad offered the cannabis to his colleagues. He was notified that his failure to treat his coworkers with decency and respect would result in termination of his employment. Indeed, Mr. Conrad has had a checkered history during his employment with the school district. But we're not here to give into all of that, nor do we need to. Because what we're here today to do is to focus on the serious misconduct in which Mr. Conrad engaged in January of this year. Mr. Conrad presumably says that superintendent's decision to terminate his employment is discriminatory and retaliatory, but that's just not true. I expect Mr. Conrad to tell you that his termination was retaliation for him reporting what he alleged to be an improper use of pesticide. But those allegations are not, are without merit and have nothing whatsoever to do with the termination of his employment. Also expect Mr. Conrad to suggest that he was discriminated against somehow for what he perceives to be an accommodation for a medical condition that the district was never made aware of. Again, this has nothing whatsoever to do with the basis for his termination. Mr. Conrad's employment was recommended to be terminated because he offered to give other coworkers cannabis on school property. So my job here today is to prove to you by a preponderance of the evidence that the superintendent's decision to terminate Mr. Conrad's employment is supported by just cause. A preponderance of the evidence means that it is at least fifty-one percent plausible or likely that Mr. Conrad did offer cannabis to his colleagues on school property during working hours, and that that action constitutes a violation of district policy. In summary, today you will hear by a preponderance of evidence showing that Mr. Conrad engaged in conduct and for a judgment that cannot be tolerated by the school district. There are specific laws prohibiting the possession of and offering of cannabis on public school grounds for a reason. Thus, you should uphold the superintendent's decision to terminate Mr. Conrad's employment. Thank you again.
All right, would you like to make an open statement?
Yes. On January twenty-third, I was approached by S R. School Resource Officer Moore regarding a false allegation accused, accusation that I offered marijuana to a coworker. At that time, I was unaware of the specifics. I did not know who made the accusations, when the alleged offer was supposed to have occurred, or where. I immediately filed a grievance with my immediate supervisor, questioning whether proper policy had been followed. It became clear that the administration was using a uniformed police officer as a tool of intimidation rather than a neutral fact-finder. Only recently, on February fifth, I was in internally, an internal investigation conducted by H R investigator Lisa Hawes, during which four of my coworkers gave statements. These are the same coworkers who originally told Officer Moore that I had merely offered them marijuana. However, during the H R investigation, their story shifted dramatically to claims that I attempted to give or sell them marijuana. This is inconsistent, raises serious concerns about the credibility of their allegations and the motives behind it. In my original grievance, I noted that the offering of or giving of marijuana not in itself is a criminal act in the state of New Mexico. I made it this point not to admit any wrongdoing since the allegations are entirely false, false, but to highlight that even if the claims had been true, they would not have warranted police intervention. Instead, the district decision to involve law enforcement appears to have been a tactic of coercion and the public shaming. Several months prior to these allegations, I submitted a report through the See Something Say Something platform documenting that these same four individuals were consuming alcohol on school property. To my knowledge, my report was truthful and founded. I now firmly believe that these individuals retaliated against me for reporting their own misconduct. Their claims that I offered marijuana was not working or had illegally photographed them are not only false but absurd. They are transparently retaliatory in nature and appear to be part of a coordinated effort to discredit me. Over a year ago, I did receive a disciplinary write-up. While I disagreed with the aspects of that action, I accepted it in good faith and corrected my behavior accordingly. Since then, no additional valid disciplinary actions have been necessary or taken until this sudden escalation rooted in retaliation.
Kohler, do you have your witnesses?
Please, I'd like to call the superintendent.
Mr. Deal, would you please raise your right hand? So I'm just wearing, telling the truth, the whole truth, that's about the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Member student is calling.
Thank you for your time today, Mr. Deal. You could please introduce yourself to the board.
Yes, my name is Cody Deal, superintendent of Farmington Municipal Schools.
And can you please also give us a brief summary of why we're here today?
Yeah, it's for the discharge proceedings for Mr. Casey Conrad.
And what is Mr. Conrad's job position with Farmington Municipal Schools?
Conrad is a grounds worker for Farmington Municipal Schools.
What are you recommending the board do, saying with Mr. Conrad?
Terminate.
Did you give Mr. Conrad a notice of termination?
I sent Mr. Conrad a notice of termination, yes.
I could please direct everyone's attention to exhibit one. And you know, up to the view. Mr. Deal, do you recognize this document?
Yes.
And what is it?
It is the notice of termination of employment to Mr. Conrad dated on May first, two thousand twenty-five.
And by whom is this letter of termination signed?
By, by myself.
I will move to exhibit.
Any objections, Connor?
No objection.
Was, was Mr. Conrad provided a copy of this notice of termination?
Yes.
When?
I do not have that in front of me, it was emailed to him and I believe also sent certified memo.
Was it closely around this time, or May first, the date of this letter?
Yes.
And you also wrote a letter providing the reasons for his termination, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, can I please start everyone to exhibit two? Mr. Deal, what is this document, what does exhibit two?
This is the document reasons for the notice of termination of employment.
And by whom is this document signed?
Signed by myself.
Is that because you prepared this document?
I did.
Okay, I will also move to exhibit.
Any objections, Connor?
No objection.
Does exhibit two explain the reasons you are recommending Mr. Conrad's employment be terminated?
Does.
Okay, so let's talk about those a little bit. What is the main reason why you recommend Mr. Conrad's employment be terminated?
The main reason is, is because that he offered cannabis to coworkers on school or at mine operations.
And why is, why is that conduct concerning to you?
I'm gonna object, I'd like for him to read the, from that notice, what the, his, should he read the notice?
I'm not asking you to read it at this time.
No, he doesn't have to, he, you have a question?
He changed the major interpretation of what, I think his original claim was that he was, that I was trafficking narcotics or something along that line.
Do you certainly can ask Mr. Deal when you get a few questions? Otherwise, it's over, go ahead, you have questions.
So, Mr. Deal, why is the conduct in which Mr. Conrad engaged specifically offering cannabis to his coworkers, why is that concerning to you?
Well, one is because it's illegal, and two, it violates school board policy. Those are the two main reasons.
And in your letter, that's what does exhibit two, you state to numerous school policies and code of ethics. I'd like to specifically direct everyone to exhibit eleven. Mr. Deal, what is exhibit eleven?
Exhibit eleven is the board policy G dash zero six five zero staff ethics policy.
And I believe this is one of the school policies you cited in your letter, my exhibit two, is that correct?
I believe so.
If I could please direct your attention to page two of exhibit eleven. Under principle three, the first bullet point, can you please read that for us?
Do you want me to read it myself or read it aloud?
Aloud.
First bullet point under commitment to the profession, recognize that a profession must accept responsibility for the conduct of its members and understand that our own conduct may be regarded as representative of our, of our profession.
Do you believe that Mr. Conrad's conduct is a good representation of the profession?
No.
And then if I could also direct your attention to the second to last bullet point on that same page.
Make appropriate use of the time granted for professional purposes.
Your position that Mr. Conrad followed this policy, this policy?
No.
Now, if we could please turn to exhibit twelve. And Mr. Deal, what is exhibit twelve?
Exhibit twelve is board policy G dash seven five zero standards of professional conduct.
And did you also cite to policy zero G dash zero seven five zero in your letter, mark as exhibit two?
Yeah.
If I could direct your attention to page three of exhibit twelve. Under standard two, the second to last main bullet point. You could please read that, starting with shall avoid conduct.
Yeah, shall avoid conduct connected with official duties that is unfair, improper, illegal, or gives the appearance of being improper or illegal.
Is it your position that Mr. Conrad's conduct violated this whole policy?
Yes.
Okay, page four, exhibit twelve, please. We're going to look at the the four main bullet points on that page, shall use educational facilities, please bring that for us.
Shall use educational facilities and property only for educational purposes or purposes for which they are intended consistent with applicable policy, law, and regulation.
Is your position that Mr. Conrad's conduct violated this whole policy?
Yes.
Okay, one more, exhibit thirteen, please. It does exhibit thirteen near the policies that we've just discussed in exhibit twelve.
Yes.
And what is exhibit thirteen?
Exhibit thirteen is code of ethics statute.
And how are you familiar with exhibits twelve, thirteen, I'm sorry, eleven, twelve, and thirteen?
Eleven and twelve are our Farmington Municipal Schools board policy and. Um, eleven and twelve are, are Farmington Municipal Schools board policy, um, and thirteen is statute, um, familiar, we use them frequently.
For how long have you been working with these school policy?
Uh, well, we adopted these particular school policies, um, in June, Ja- July of twenty-two. Um, but, so those, so since July of twenty-two. But policy prior is very similar.
Great. Um, I would need to admit exhibit eleven through thirteen.
Any objections, Connor?
No objection.
Hey, Mary.
Um, in your letter, uh, mark does exhibit two, which is the reasons for Mr. Conrad's termination. You, uh, you mentioned a letter, a different letter dated April eighteenth of two thousand twenty-four. Let's see where you. Oh, there you go. Okay. Thank you. On page two of exhibit two. In the second to last paragraph. You mentioned a letter of reprimand issued to Mr. Conrad on April eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Can you please tell us a little bit about that?
Um, yeah, there's a letter of reprimand for some, um, things that happened. As Mr. Conrad referenced in his opening statement, um. Misconduct, unprofessional conduct towards school workers, um, there was a couple of equipment things that were in that letter as well.
I'm gonna object because the. That letter of reprimand does not reference misconduct. Or unprofessional behavior. Well, no, it does. It does claim the, uh, some language of, uh, speaking. I can't remember, I don't have the document in front of me, but I know. I'm pretty sure misconduct was not in that. In that document that he's referring to.
Well, we're actually not for that.
Okay.
Okay, then we'll just look at it.
Okay, so if everyone can turn to exhibit three, please.
I, I'm gonna need another copy of that. I only had one. And I, I gave one to a guest.
No, oh. Well, that is, that is not your.
Okay, but everybody seems to have a copy here, including that.
Well, this has a copy, this has a copy. The board members have a copy.
I got my copy back, thank you.
Thank you, okay. We were looking at exhibit.
Exhibit three, please.
Exhibit three.
Mr. Deal, do you recognize exhibit three?
I've seen exhibit three, yes.
And can you please describe to us what it is?
This exhibit three is a letter of reprimand from April eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, um, a letter of reprimand for Mr. Casey Conrad, um, given to him by his supervisor, uh, or the overall supervisor of. Plan operations, Isaac Gamble.
And, um, are letters of reprimand a common procedure when disciplining employees for misconduct?
Yes.
How do you know?
Um, I've given them out before. Um, and I've seen others, and we have a template, a letter template in Farmington Municipal Schools for our letters of reprimand, so they, they, um, are consistent.
For about how many years would you say have you been working with or seeing these letters of reprimand?
So these letters, uh, this particular template, um, I introduced when I was an assistant director of H R in two thousand sixteen or seventeen, so several years.
And, um, I believe this particular letter of reprimand is signed by Isaac Gamble, is that correct?
That's correct.
And did you work with Mr. Gamble during the investigation leading up to this?
So, um, I did work with Mr. Gamble when they. When it was reported to us, Mr. Gamble and I did meet with Mr. Conrad. Um, I did not deliver the letter of reprimand, Mr. Gamble did. I believe Mr. Gamble also worked with our, uh, H R office in, with the letter.
And what was your role in the investigation leading up to this?
Um, more than anything, just being a witness to, um, the questioning by Mr. Gamble.
And can you, um? Can you, uh, provide a little bit of background as to, um? The directive in this letter that tells Mr. Conrad he has to direct and treat all employees with decency and respect?
Yeah, so do you want me to? Just read the letter or do you want, or? But I restated the question, I'm sorry.
That's okay, um, so you stated you were present during the questioning of Mr. Conrad? Do you recall what conduct he engaged in that would cause the district to tell him to treat his workers with decency and respect?
I do not have the notes in front of me, but if, as I recall, there was an incident in one of our schools where Mr. Conrad, um. Was talking to or conversing with, uh, two custodians, our lead custodians.
Do you believe, based on your recollection, do you believe that this letter exhibit three is a fair and accurate representation of the conclusion of the investigation leading up to this?
I do.
I would move to exhibit three.
Your objections, Mr.?
No objection.
Also, I'm gonna advise the board. Does it, the matter that contained within the letter of reprimand is not part of his termination, is not being terminated for that. Uh, if I gather this forward, it is being used that we had been given notice of appropriate conduct.
That is correct.
So it can only be offered for notice of appropriate conduct. So, what? What the letter's about will not be introduced.
And the, to clarify that point, uh, Mr. Deal, if you could please read for us the last sentence of the second to last paragraph starting with please be advised.
Um, say, say one more, okay, please be advised that any deviation from this directive will constitute insubordination and will lead to immediate and more severe discipline up to and including discharge or termination.
Thank you.
If, if it's not admissible, why is he allowed to read that statement? You're saying that this, that, that we're not going back this far?
We're not going back this far in terms of misconduct, but what they're doing is they're offering it is that he was placed on notice.
For misconduct?
For misconduct. But what, it, it was, and we were placed on notice that a repeat of that conduct will result in additional discipline, that's what it's being used for.
Yeah, because they reference this document.
That's, that's where you got the notice.
Okay.
That's all it's being used for, not, nobody is allowed to talk about whatever happened with custodians. And that will not be allowed, the board's not allowed.
So what makes the part of the document admissible and the other part not?
But you were given a warrant about similar type misconduct.
Okay, and how come that wasn't given to counsel before this? Before this hearing that, that she couldn't ask questions about the content of that. About that the custodians. How do you know about the custodians?
The, Mr. Deal just told me it was about talking to custodians.
Okay, well, then, so you're saying that that's out of purview for her to go into? So now I could no longer go into it?
If you would like to talk about the custodians, you're more than willing to do that.
Okay, we'll do.
Okay, um, finally, Mr. Deal, was terminate, recommending the termination of Mr. Conrad's employment a decision you took lightly?
No. I don't ever say that lightly, um, but. It's, there's always tough decisions, but we have to look at the, the whole organization and the working of the organization, so no, to answer your question, I don't ever take it lightly.
Thank you for your time. I will pass the witness.
You may pass the examiner, Mr. Connor.
Yeah.
Do you take it lightly accusing people of, uh, trafficking cannabis? Without due process?
I'll, I'll object to that. I don't know where the trafficking.
He's, it's written, and we haven't read his reason for termination.
Point to the, point to an asterisk.
Right, can we, can you please go back to the reason for termination and read that? For the audience?
Uh. In your grievance. Do you want me to read the whole letter?
Not the grievance, the.
Uh, I'm, I'm getting to it, you all, uh.
Your letter for termination, reason for termination.
Yeah, uh, give me a minute. I don't know, I'm, uh, where are you referring to me in the whole thing? Uh, not the reasons, but the actual termination letter?
The whole termination letter, I'd like you to read it. Um, your honor. If, uh, assuming that's, uh, how I refer to you, like have, uh, there's two policies that I would like to go over, do I need to admit them as evidence?
No, you can start, but, um, are you gonna cross them with it or is it?
I'm asking them for the read, the reason for termination.
Yeah, we're going through the doc, the document that he said, but I s. Do you have any idea where in this letter this is trafficking, because I can't find it?
Well, I'm on the notice of termination. Um, he's, he's supposed to, so I guess that's not submitted yet. Um.
If you're talking about.
My, my apologies, I'm on, I'm already ahead of. So the note, this has been a big, uh, confusionary. Notice of termination wasn't termination and, uh. I confused the document. So this, this document is just his intent. It should be intent for intermin- for termination. Because it doesn't give reason, he's right, my apologies, this has been a very confusing process. Um, and, uh, I'll go back to the, uh. I guess I'll have to skip ahead because, uh, he's made claims. He's made claims that I haven't been privileged to due process. Uh, is that, have you done that, sir? Yes or no?
I have not visited with you.
You, no, have you made claims of me drug trafficking in written, written form?
Um, in the reasons for notice of termination, it says first, honor about January fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, it is reported that you were attempting to sell or give marijuana to coworkers at your work site.
Okay. But are you saying yes or no, did you make any written claims that I'm a drug trafficker?
I have never made that claim written.
I'm done with him.
Any redirect?
Um, no, no difference. Thank you.
Any questions for the board members, superintendent? Excuse, Mr. Deal, thank you. Do you have any other witnesses?
I do, next I would like to call Mr. Conrad.
Mr. Conrad, if you raise your right hand. You saw me swear the testimony, you're about to give the truth, the whole truth, and I think that's truth.
Yes.
Thank you, may be seated. Where are you, maybe again?
Thank you. Mr. Conrad, um, first of all, can you please reintroduce yourself to the board?
I'm A C Conrad. Here for termination hearing.
Is that how you would explain your own words while you're here today for a termination hearing?
Uh. I'm not. Those were my own words and, uh.
Would you like to elaborate to the board from your perspective, why were you here today?
Uh. No, I don't have any reason to.
So, um, I'm, I'm just gonna ask, ask you point blank. Did you offer cannabis to your coworkers on January tenth, two thousand twenty-five?
No.
Are you aware of the cannabis laws in Minnesota?
Uh, I, there was no reason for me to understand cannabis law for any board policy. Or I'd be trained in.
All right, well, I'm not, I'm not asking if you were required as part of your employment to understand cannabis laws, I'm just asking if you're familiar.
I'm, I'm familiar with, um, some recently acquired, um. Laws that pertain to my, uh, medical cannabis card.
So you do have a medical cannabis card?
Yes.
How, for how long have you had a medical cannabis card?
Uh, I can't remember, I think for a couple of months.
Couple of months, so, um. Maybe more, more or less than three months ago.
Yes, before I got terminated.
Did you have a medical cannabis card in January?
I was inquiring about it.
You did not yet have one?
I was pursuing to get one.
In January, so you did not yet have?
Uh, actually in December, when I, when I had an accident and I voluntarily went to a U A. With, uh, for Alan Eager, because I told him that we needed to. Get this known that this can happen.
Get what, know that?
That, that they, that they do a, a ten panel for drugs. And that, and then after I took the exam. I asked Alan Eager how I would know I wasn't allowed to be on these drugs. Where? And he didn't know what to say.
Okay, what, what, what panel?
It's a drug, it's a drug, it's a screening, it's a ten panel of, of what, a you, a urine analysis. And it, it puts up indicators of substances that you are on.
Were you asked to take a U I panel?
Yeah, most accidents, most policies have, um. That they should be sent, if, especially if you're safety sensitive. To go and get a urine analysis, they, they, that's one of the problems, this administration picks and chooses. Who they want to send to U As. And, uh, that's, that really endangers the public and coworkers and school children.
Okay, were you asked by any of your?
I volunteered, I told him, I told him that. That. To make a sign that this is possible to happen. I give you permission, if you wanna send me, I'm not gonna resist. And he sent me.
So, okay, so you did do a U I panel?
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
When was this?
It was, uh, right before Christmas break, I can't remember, the, um.
Of this, of this?
Of twenty, twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, yeah.
And how did your U I panel come back? What were the results?
I don't know, like, I, I'm guessing plain or they would have used it against me.
But you don't know what your results were?
I didn't, I didn't pursue to get myself a copy, uh, I can't. I could, I don't, I didn't think it was necessary because I knew I wasn't on drugs. But again, if I, a lot of some of those drugs, you could have a prescription by a doctor. And it would have, it would have caused some conflict.
So why are you, why are you telling us today that if you had a prescription, then your U I panel would have been fine?
Because I was in the pursuit, I was in the pursuit of. The ability to consume medical cannabis.
Okay. Um, okay, and, and I guess I'm just not following why that's relevant here, can you please explain why your pursuit of a?
Because it's, because right now, there's a lot of complications when it comes to drug and alcohol policy. And, and actual law, some, a lot of these laws have changed. And, uh, and, and it's not. I was pursuing accommodation and. Mr. Eager was aware of it. That I asked him questions that. That, excuse me, I need a drink.
Sure.
The, um. Mr. Eager is also, um. Trying to warm up to. Our, our job duties are, are safety sensitive, we run heavy equipment and really nobody should be on. Medical marijuana per the feds.
Okay, excuse me, I'm just not very bad. Because you're saying that, but then you're also keep talking about how you're trying to get a medical cannabis card?
I wanted to see if it was even possible. It's not possible. It's not possible to have that job and be on cannabis.
Okay.
So.
Um. Okay, can, can we please look at? Can we please look at exhibit five? Um, on the book, in the book, it right in front of you?
Oh.
Um, do you recognize this document, Mr. Conrad?
Yeah, that's my grievance to Alan Eager. Yeah, that's my grievance to Alan Eager.
And um, can you please explain to us what exactly your grievance was here?
That. The two policies.
Wait, excuse me, what are you looking at?
I, I need to pull up the policies. The, the policy G zero nine five zero G B E C.
Okay, we don't have those in front of us, so I'm not really.
And my apologies, because I did not know how this forum was gonna be, the board itself has two, two policies. That, that refer to drug use that are in greater detail than the. Than the ones that have been presented to you, I. I'm gonna have to include them verbally, because I did not know how to, I did not think that I would have to admit. Something that is part of the boards. Uh, it's your own foundation, it's your base, that, that we're supposed to work off of.
Okay, well, well, um. You didn't, you didn't explain those policies in this letter, and so right now I'm, I'm asking you about your grievance. So, without, without telling us exactly what those policies are.
Mr. Conrad, before you, so you don't have to stop this. Give me the policies again.
Okay.
And I'll make sure. We'll figure out.
Yeah, no, that'd be great, sir, I, I appreciate it, it's a G zero. Nine. Five zero G B. E C. And. Uh, G. One thousand. G B E C A.
G B C. What was it, G B C E A?
I mean, the numbers, G dash zero nine five zero, G dash one down.
Okay, seven. Alright.
Okay, so what was your grievance in this exhibit five, what was your grievance?
In, that policies weren't followed on, on a. On drug and alcohol abuse. Uh, they haven't been for a long time.
And did you feel that the policies weren't followed with regard to something you did?
No, there's nothing that. There's nothing in those policies that I violated, those policies actually require. Oh, possession of. The said substance on school property. On your, even in your, in your work truck. It, it is very blatantly clear. In the guidance of the, of that board policy that possession on school properties is. Is the number one. Piece of evidence that needs to be. Uh, documented to have a, a violation of those policies.
Did um, did someone allege that you were in possession of drugs? On the school property?
Well, that story keeps changing.
Did, did anyone at any point allege that you had drugs on school property?
Everything. That I just recently learned was uh, two days ago within your discovery. That um. Indicates that. There was a lot of uh, changing of stories. Uh, through. This administration's investigation. But the. The police investigation was disregarded.
What, what police investigation?
It's, it's within your evidence, it's, I'm sure it's coming up.
Okay, exhibit six.
Okay.
Exhibit six. Um, so. Have, had you, this, this, I will represent everyone that this is a narrative. From um, an officer, M Moore. Who um, conducted an investigation, or at least attempted to conduct an investigation. Into the allegations that Mr. Conrad offered his coworkers cannabis.
Do you agree, Mr. Conrad? Uh, or do you object, object?
I object that it's. That it actually refers to a case number, so it, I mean it. The way she claimed. Yeah, I'm good, I'm good with it, um, this is my favorite document.
Well, it's just a secret, it's not, it's not a report, an official report, but it is. A narrative written by the officer who.
From the report, is that for any to comment?
Yes.
Okay, well then, it, it can be, the board can take it. A while until the extent that you feel you'd be too, with regards to it being no objection, that this apparently is the narrative from the police office.
So, Mr. Conrad, did you, well, first of all, um. Where, tell me about the circumstances in which you came to talk to Officer Moore.
Um. From all the evidence you presented to me, it's uh, seeming like a. It, it all stems from Robert Atencio. Um, after having engaged in a very negative. Um. Interaction with me, was sent to. Was sent to, I guess, up here and then uh, spoke with Gamboa. And Gamboa, they made allegations. He made allegations which included everybody. I don't know if they were all on the same page at that time, cause I am speculating that, and but uh. The, but through your documents, that. There. That's what I know of, that, that Robert was sent up here. And then, then Gamboa. Um, there's a document from, I think Mister Eager in the, in the Hawes investigation. That refers to. The word, when the first allegations of the drugs, uh. It's very confusing, um, a lot of different uh. It all stems to. The allegations. Because they're retaliatory from. From uh, Robert Atencio. That he didn't like that I reported that, that. He was suspect of. Of uh, being under the influence. On during James Haley's uh. Uh, retirement party that. That he got mad at me on, on that next Monday and then. Um, crossed the line. With his verbiage, and he was sent to. To Gamboa or HR and then. Then these allegations came up. That I'm uh. Uh, offering marijuana cannabis or marijuana, or giving or, or selling. Uh, but everything's really, to my defense. That those policies require possession on school property. And. This statement of the uh. Of this officer at the bottom, I did not find any criminal activity, and will therefore close this report as unfounded. Yet. After this date, and I'm guessing from this report is sometime at, a little after the twenty third. I'm still getting accused by Christopher Pash. Of trafficking marijuana. And, and I'm. And it's, it's also being sent. To other agencies in written form. That I'm a drug trafficker, I traffic cannabis. To the extreme of, to criminality.
Okay, well, I will remind you that superintendent deal Justin and I had ever calling you a drug trafficker. So, we would like to be very clear about that, but my question to you was, how did you first come to talk with Officer Moore? I'll make it a little bit more specific. Where were you when you first talked to Officer Moore?
Uh. I was uh. I was on break at the uh. At the Goodwill Center.
And you were on break at that time?
Yes.
Okay. Um. And so please, please explain to me the interaction between you and Officer Moore.
Um, he read me my Miranda rights. And uh. And, and I accepted it, I said, I'm not gonna discuss this.
So you, you actually didn't provide any statements to Officer Moore, right?
Well, we talked, we talked a little after, but.
Well, I mean, you didn't provide any statements about the allegations that you were offering cannabis to your coworkers.
No, I retained my rights.
Okay, so, um. Back, if we could go back to the five place. When you, um, when you sent this for events on January twenty third, twenty twenty five, what prompted you to submit this grievance?
Um, I. I wasn't completely in depth with the, with the two policies that I stated, but uh. I knew. It didn't, it didn't feel right, because. They were using the GPS. On the trucks, and then they were giving it to the law enforcement officer, and I feel like I know that you own the truck. But the, the GPS. The, the, the GPS was tracked. It, it's tracked to who. Is utilizing that vehicle, so, um, I'm sure Mister uh. Mister Moore, uh, not Mister Moore, but uh, Mister Eager will. Will admit to this, that uh, that. Tracking the truck is one thing, but this was being. This was being utilized. To track me, it, the, it wasn't identified as the unit, and it was being given to a law enforcement agency. I have a copy of the reple- police report. And uh, it gives a. A couple of different times that, that uh. Officer Moore was given my coordinates.
So.
And I feel that's a violation of. Uh, I've, I've. I've already talked to. I've already talked to. The um. The police department about this and uh, there, it's under review.
Um. Okay, so are, are you saying that's what? That's what prompted you? You to send this grievance, and someone um, reported your conduct to law enforcement?
If. There should have been, by those, by the policy, there should have been a, an internal investigation. That had facts. It, the policy requires. Facts to, before you call. Before you called it, um.
Okay, so, so that, so you submitted this grievance because you believed it was improper, that law enforcement was called? Before an internal investigation was that?
Yes.
Okay.
So then. Okay, technically their investigation violates the. The, their policies.
In your grievance. Is there anywhere in that grievance that you denied the allegations? That you offered cannabis to your coworkers?
A, a grievance isn't, isn't about. Um.
Just, please just say yes or no, you'll, you'll get your full term to pay.
No, there, why would I? Why would I admit or deny anything in agreements when a grievance is for. Stating what. Forum. Has been. Not followed correctly. That's the point of the grievance.
So, so no, but no, you didn't, you didn't make any dissertation that. You didn't, or that you offer cannabis to your coworkers in your group.
The grievance is about the quorum of the.
Please.
No, there's no reason to put that in a grievance, it's not.
Okay, but I'm, I'm not asking if there's a reason, I'm just asking.
No, no, it's not in there, it's not in there at all, cause it's not required.
Prior to getting your medical cannabis card. Were you using cannabis at all?
My UA on, on December. In twenty twenty third year, uh, should have indicated. Uh, yes or no on that?
Okay, during the last school year, twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five school year. Had you used cannabis?
I don't. I don't even use cannabis currently.
So, did you, so you're interested now?
No, I don't use cannabis.
So, did you ever, other than the allegations from Jan- January tenth, twenty twenty five? Did you ever talk to your coworkers about cannabis or any other drugs? That have been existed?
We, we talked about medical cannabis.
Is that it?
That's it. And accommodations, I, I, I actually, I had a lot of questions on people having accidents. And this was prior before uh, Mister. Mister Eager has been on board, um, of having accidents and. Being able to say, don't send me for a. For a test because I'll fail, and then they have accommodated to that. Administration and supervisors.
Okay, I don't, I don't think they, your first time, not, that's not really.
Well, they told me.
Did you, did you ever tell any of your coworkers that you grow cannabis at your house?
I showed pictures.
Of what?
Marijuana. Cannabis.
Where, and where?
In my yard. In my yard.
So, uh, just to be crystal clear for the board here today, your testimony under oath. Today is that you did not offer your coworkers cannabis on January tenth, two thousand twenty five?
I do not traffic cannabis.
I didn't ask you that. I said, is it your testimony today, under oath? That you did not offer cannabis to your coworkers on January tenth, twenty twenty five?
No.
Wait, wait, I'm sorry, who, who are you getting direction from for your testimony?
Uh.
I, I would just ask that, please, if you could provide your own testimony when you're on the scene.
It's a. Oh, so you're retracting that question?
No, I'm not, I will re-ask it. Just to be clear for the board, it is your testimony today, under oath. That on January tenth, twenty twenty five, you did not offer cannabis to any of your coworkers.
On January tenth, no way, because he was already mad at.
I have nothing further.
Mister Conrad?
Yes.
I'm gonna give you some options that you need to consider this, because you, you. Kind of awkward for you to. To. Cross-examine yourself or direct yourself. So. This is the way we could do it. Um. You can. Narrow your, your discussion here, or make a statement to the board, narrow to what this caller asked you. Knowing that. You can call yourself back up and you can make a further statement. Or you could leave it there. Leave it what it is here. And then when you give your story, you could go ahead and make your statement, but you'd be subject to cross-examination again.
Yeah, I've, I've.
I, I'm just trying to see, do you wanna, do you wanna do this twice, or do you wanna do it once?
No, I'm. I don't wanna do it anymore, I do appreciate you admitting those, those other policies into the. Uh, I'm hoping that they're, the, the two that I gave you are gonna be included.
They will be.
Okay, great.
Okay, so. What? The, my understanding just current is that you will make a statement when it's, you, when you could present your case then.
As a, I'm, I'm just gonna do closing and then.
Well, that's, that's your option, right, Ms. Ms. Cole, you have other witnesses, right?
Okay.
Okay, so, we'll, we'll go forward with that, and then we'll see what you wanna do after you've heard other witnesses, I just don't wanna find you to, I don't wanna talk. You, you still might wanna cross-examine these.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, next, I would uh, please call Mr. Robert.
Ready to read it, please, you saw me swear the testimony about to give us truth, and all truth, and think about the truth.
Yes, sir.
Have a seat. George, do you have any questions?
Yes. Thank you for your time today, Mr. Atencio, um, can you please introduce yourself to the board and tell them what your role is with the district?
Uh, I'm Robert, and I take care of this person at the irrigation. And on the school grounds.
Are you familiar with Mister Conrad?
Yes.
And how, are you familiar with Sir?
He used to work with us.
Did you work with Mister Conrad in January of twenty twenty five?
No. Or, I mean, yes, he worked with us, now like directly with him now.
Okay, um. In January twenty twenty five, did Mister Conrad offer me cannabis? Can you please, less briefly, about?
Um, me and Santiago, we were in my truck at the my house yard. And uh, soon we were on lunch or something and. Uh. He had drove up to the truck and I rolled my window down and. He offered, he said. Uh, do you guys partake? And. He said, no, he said, well, I'm growing and. I help out other individuals with like anxiety. And other like medical issues, if you wanna follow me, like I could put you guys up with some.
Were you on school grounds when this conversation happened?
Yeah, it was at my house, the residence houses.
Okay, that is all my questions for you, Mr. Atencio, thank you again, I will pass me to Mister Conrad.
Uh, do you have any questions?
Yes. What was the? The exact date and time of this?
Oh, January tenth, um, like lunches, eleven to twelve. Somewhere in the room, okay, thank you.
I.
Do you have any redirect?
I have no redirect, thank you, sir.
There you go. All right, do you have any questions? Thank you. You have any other witnesses?
I do. Um, next, I would like to please call Mister William Jux.
John, would you raise your right hand? You saw me swear the testimony about to give is truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
I do.
Have a seat.
Thank you for being here, Mister Jones. Um can you please introduce yourself to the board and tell them what your role is with the district?
Uh my name is William Jones and I'm with the ground group and I prepare for following details on this.
Are you familiar with Mister Casey Conrad?
Yes, I am.
How are you familiar with Mister Conrad?
He used to work in the grounds part with us.
Did you work with Mister Conrad in January of twenty twenty five?
Uh no, not one one though, but he was some, he was, he was there.
He was there. In January twenty twenty five, did Mister Conrad offer you cannabis?
I was present witness offering to others.
Okay, and can you please tell us a little bit about that?
Uh yes, uh Robert Santiago and Danny weren't shot and uh I was having a walk up and he was talking to me, he was offering them cannabis. We, he said I was growing a new batch and he said that if you wanted, he can bring some for them. But. He was like, kinda like, kinda like he wanted them to try it, like, to see if they liked it, and if they did, like, he could bring them more.
Okay, um and were you on school grounds when that conversation happened?
Yes, we were at plant operations.
Okay, that was all the questions back.
All right, you have the cross.
Uh what, what date was this?
January tenth.
And what time?
I believe it was like at one thirty, around one.
And then I also wanna go to exhibit. Exhibit six. If you can pull up exhibit six on there.
You have a question?
Yes, I um trying to find it here. I'm trying to find then where uh. I'm under the on January twenty third. Um it states Mister Jones said he had not directly been offered any marijuana by Mister Conrad. But had just heard about the incident from others.
Yes.
Are you?
Oh, okay.
So. This is, you made this statement to a to a law enforcement officer. Are you gonna still stand by your claims?
I never spoke into the law officer.
You never spoke to a law officer? On uh on January twenty third?
If you not remember. Yes, that was in reference to like, I've heard in passing that you're offering to uh people in plant operations to help them sleep. And that you've been growing the new batches and you've been trying new things. And that you've been uh wanting to probably to uh try something new that they like.
So please reiterate what you heard and saw on January tenth around one, one P M.
Oh, yes, I was in, I was just came back from to the shop. And then the bay door was Santiago, Damian and Robert. And they're about, you know, when I popped up to them and you're already talking to them and you're offering them marijuana. Then when I came up to you guys, you know, it's not like you're trying to offer them marijuana and ask it to see if you wanted to try it for free. And then.
Sorry, if Mister Jones didn't agree to it, could you ignore your answer and repeat that shot?
Okay, thank you. Good.
Any other good forward to the met programers, have any questions? Do you have any redirect, Kurt?
Just a quick one. So, but um Mister Jones, did you overhear Mister Conrad offering cannabis or talking about cannabis that he grows? To other people at work on more than one occasion?
Yes.
Thank you for that.
Any questions? This is Mister Johnson's here.
Thank you, Mister.
You have any other witnesses?
Yes. Okay, next, please, Mister Damian Folkerson, Folkerson.
You saw me swear the testimony about to give is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth. Maybe see.
Dana, do you pronounce your last name to Folperson or Volker?
It's Folker.
Folker, okay, thank you so much for your time today. Um can you please introduce yourself to the board and let them know what your role is with the district?
Uh I'm Damian Folkerson and I do kind of a lot of stuff at the schools, like they put me in a lot of places, been there a while.
Did you, well, are you familiar with Mister Casey Conrad?
Yes.
And how are you familiar with Mister Conrad?
Worked there.
Okay, did you work with Mister Conrad in January of twenty twenty five? In January twenty twenty five, did Mister Conrad offer you cannabis? Can you please tell me a little bit about that?
Uh we were, uh a couple of the guys were hanging out at the shop and we were in a group at the warehouse. He came in and he basically told us that he grows weed and if we wanted to sample some of it. He would give us some for feedback for other representatives. And then as we were leaving the shop, he stopped me and a couple of the coworkers in our trucks. And asked us separately if we would like to come over to his house and think about. Without the work truck, so that in our personal vehicles.
Oh, okay, did you specifically say, but only come in your personal vehicle? And um you were also at the plant op on school grounds when this happened? Thank you, that's all my questions today. Oh, wait, Mister Conrad, I have a question for you.
Do you operate heavy equipment for the school district?
Uh sometimes, yes.
Are you still currently operating heavy equipment for the school district?
Uh yes.
Do you use an excavator at school property?
No.
Do other employees use an excavator at school property?
I'm just gonna object to the relevance of this questioning.
The.
Can you tell me what you worry about?
Uh I'm, what, I mean, it was in court today, I'm trying to establish that we have a safety sensitive position status. And that you can't accommodate for people being on marijuana.
You can ask him those questions, but I don't see.
Well, that seems to be outside the scope of what my question was for this.
It's just people calling him back, so. I'm gonna allow it, but. Keep it narrow, skip, get to the, I think you can ask him directly.
Uh uh public record, uh it was seen that you were scheduled for court today. Did that happen?
Uh I don't see how that's relevant to this quick.
Well, why is it not?
Because it 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 uh I'm trying to acquire what kind of license he has right now, a driver's license. That has a restriction on it.
Well, I don't know, but but why, what does it matter that he has a restriction?
Because you can't, you can't operate heavy equipment and be on marijuana.
Okay, that has nothing to do with what he witnessed.
Okay.
Can you, can you keep it to that?
Yes. What uh, what date did you, what did Mister Conrad uh offer you marijuana?
That was February tenth, I believe.
Do you believe at what time?
Uh I can't recall.
Do you, do you remember any other dates?
I don't.
That's it. Thank you.
Any questions for the board?
And let me ask Mister Conrad why he would be, he would be examining Mister Faulkner? He's just a witness, he is not here.
No, uh it. It's Congress, Conrad uh. Can ask the questions, can ask questions about it, it has to be relevant to what he saw, what he did see. Or or something go into his credibility. I didn't see that, so um his questions were appropriate for for Jenny, so um. Thank you, I appreciate your interest.
Thank you.
Any other ways?
Some more, um next, I'd like to call please Mister Santiago, I'm gonna repeat it.
Would you raise your hand? Uh, John, we swear the testimony about to give is truth, you have truth, nothing but the truth.
Yes, sir.
Have a seat, please.
Thank you for your time today, Mister Martinez. Um can you please introduce yourself to the board and tell them your role at the district?
I'm Santiago Martinez, I work for grounds.
Are you familiar with Mister Casey Conrad?
Yes.
How are you familiar with Mister Conrad?
Um he was a former coworker.
Did you work, what what was Mister Conrad a former coworker in January of twenty twenty five?
Twenty four, or oh yeah, I'm sorry, yes, yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Sure, that's fair. In January of twenty twenty five, did Mister Conrad offer you cannabis?
Yes.
Can you please tell us?
Robert, and so said, um we were in our work truck and it was, I want to say a little bit after lunch, about eleven. Ish, maybe eleven thirty, and he uh came up to the driver's side window, Robert was driving and. Said that he was growing weed and asked us that we wanted to try it, and if we did, that we'd have to uh. Use our personal vehicles to go to his house and pick some up, but. Pretty much it.
And um just to confirm, were you on school grounds when that conversation?
Yes, we were at plant operations.
That is all my questions for you.
Mister Conrad, do you have any cross?
I don't have any questions.
Board members, do you have any questions? You're just gonna thank you.
Thank you.
Give another witness.
I do this witness, um will be carried by telephone, so.
And 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 so for the record, why is this permit of the?
It's a Lisa House.
Yes.
Yes.
So ask, ask her if she prefers uh phone or Zoom. She just can't, she had surgery.
Okay.
But it can't be here for reasons, medical reasons. Miss Hawes?
Yes, I'm unmuted.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Clear.
Okay. March. Okay, go ahead, please.
All right, Miss Hawes, you went, I'm gonna have to ask you to describe your surroundings. Uh are you uh are you capable of raising your right hand and hearing me properly when you take the oath?
Uh yes, sir. Um I am actually in my home, in my kitchen, and nobody else is here, just me. And yes, I can.
We will trust that you're raising your right hand?
Yes, sir.
It's always where the testimony about to give is truth, nothing but the truth.
Y- yes.
Yeah. Let me make a soon.
Thank you, thank you, Miss Hawes, for being here. Um even though you're in the midst of recovery. You could please introduce yourself to the board and explain what your role is with the district?
Um my name is Lisa Hawes and I am the uh human resources investigator.
Can you please tell us a little bit about your history as an investigator of in general, even beyond what you've done with the school?
Are you just like, um. So stop me if I tell you if this is not what you're asking. Um my previous history is um law enforcement. I'm retired law enforcement. I was a detective, um detective supervisor, detective lieutenant. And ran investigations.
And how long have you been working with the district?
Um I started, I think it was like the first, the first week of November.
Of of um this last week?
Of yeah, yeah, twenty twenty four.
And um are you familiar with a uh Arlington News fiscal district employee named Casey Conrad?
Uh yes, I am.
How did you become familiar with Mister Conrad?
Um I was, I learned of Casey Conrad, he had been placed on administrative leave. And um they asked me to do an investigation um after law enforcement had spoke to him, which is um. The common thing that we do.
Do you remember when about you were asked to do an investigation?
Uh yes, Mister. So I I was asked on um, it was like February fourth of twenty twenty five, I was. Um advised that he had been placed on administrative leave and um asked to uh do an investigation.
And how do you think that's investigative?
Um my I my direct supervisor, um it was Chris Pash, the executive director of H R.
And um what what were you asked specifically to investigate in February of twenty twenty five?
Um allegations of misconduct um and whether Con- Conrad, Mister Conrad had. Allegedly offered to give or sell marijuana uh to several of his coworkers. Uh while on school property and or during work time.
And what um what actions did you take in your investigation from Mister Conrad?
Um so he was already placed on administrative leave and then I spoke, so I spoke to all of the um. Grounds workers about the incident and what they knew about it.
Um Miss Hawes, do you have um a document that we've marked as exhibit four in front of you?
Yes, um exhibit four is my um investigative report.
And and you this, you wrote this document based on your investigation?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so.
Any objection, Miss?
No objection.
It's admitted.
Um. So, so. What did you learn? Well, first, let me ask you, um who? Who did you interview during your investigation?
Well, during my investigation, I interviewed um the the ground supervisor Alan Akers. Um I interviewed uh the assistant ground supervisor Sam Martinez. Grounds worker uh Robert Atencio. Um grounds worker uh Will William Jones. And let's see. So, I am a grounds worker Damian Folkerson. Um Santiago Martinez, and I think that's all.
And um back to you. Your your the first interview that you have documented, ground supervisor Alan Ekers. Can you please explain to us um or summarize for us what you learned from Mister Ekers during your interview with him?
Um so Mister Akers was the supervisor and um. He had learned that um. Casey Conrad had offered uh marijuana to some of his coworkers. Um also, the um Mister Conrad had um claimed another employee had been intoxicated. And um which is something that they had looked into, but the main thing was whether or not he had been offering um. Marijuana to the other employees.
Um did Mister Akers tell you um. Whether Mister Conrad's allegation that another coworker was intoxicated? Did Mister Akers tell you whether that allegation was substantiated?
Um so, yeah, they looked into that and they um immediately after Conrad had. Um made the allegations, they had the the guy immediately brought him in and it was discounted as um being false. And that was Robert Atencio.
Thank you. Um from your interview with supervisor Sam Martinez, what did you learn?
Um. But on the afternoon of um like January ninth. Um I think that was the day that uh Martinez said that um that he had learned that. Conrad was saying that Case, Casey was saying, sorry about that. Um. Casey had said that Atencio had been intoxicated and they had brought him in for. For questioning and found that it was false. Um and also that the grounds crew had contacted him and had advised that. Uh employees were saying that he was offering to give and or sell them um marijuana while at work.
Okay, and then um in your report, and as you stated, uh you also interviewed grounds workers. Robert Atencio, William Jones, Damian Folkerson, and Santiago Martinez. And um generally, what did you learn from those? And um, generally, what did you learn from those four individuals?
Um, it's basically all, all of them had um consistent stories that uh Mr. Conrad had approached them. Um, offering to give and or possibly sell them drugs while they were working on school.
Thank you. Um, did you find the witnesses you interviewed to be credible?
Um, yes, a- and consistent in all of their stories.
Did you interview each uh individual separately from the other interviewees?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Um, each person was brought in separately, um, and, yeah, sent out, they weren't, they weren't together.
So based on your interviews with these six individuals, what was your conclusion in, of your investigation?
Um, the, the conclusion, the conclusion was that um Mr. Conrad had offered to give and or sell marijuana to the other grounds workers while um at work or school property.
Okay, Ms. Haas, thank you. That was all my questions for you. I will um ask the miss to Mr. Conrad for his questions.
I don't know, do you have any questions from the side?
Um, did you ever interview Mr. Conrad?
I, I did not speak with you.
And were you directed not to do that?
Um, not, no.
Any other questions?
That's all.
No other questions.
Board members, do you have any questions from the side? Ms. Haas, thank you for your time, uh, get well.
Thank you.
Any other witnesses?
I do, but we'll need a quick break.
Board, the board would like to take a break at this point, since there's no witnesses standing right now.
Yeah, I think that's appropriate, we've been here for uh over two hours, so. Okay.
All right. Madam Vice.
We'll take a quick ten minute break.
Let's go, do you have any witnesses? You can't do this.
Can I please call uh Kenneth Aker to do this now, please?
The testimony you're about to give is truth, I hope truth, nothing but the truth. I'll do, have a seat, please.
Thank you for your time today, Mr. Aker. Can you please introduce yourself to the board and tell them what your role is?
My name is Kenneth Aker, uh Alan, I go by Alan, and uh my role is OSHA compliance, and at the time of this, I was also the ground supervisor, OSHA compliance officer.
And so are you familiar with Mr. Conrad?
I am very.
Um, in exhibit four, uh which is the investigation of Fort Ms. Haas. She documents um in the interview that she had with you regarding some validations that uh Mr. Conrad offered cannabis to some of the other grounds crew. Um, can you please uh tell us, tell us how you came to know about uh Mr. Conrad offering cannabis to his coworkers?
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Martinez and I were together um uh investigating some uh laws and things that we were looking at. And uh Sam received a text uh from Mr. Conrad that uh that he believes that there, that uh someone might be impaired, and he didn't mention any names up until uh the initials uh of R eight, which is referring to Robert Atencio. So um after that, we immediately um went to um the plan ops shop, at the shop on the, on school grounds, and uh Sam got out of the pickup and uh asked Robert if he would get in to meet, and so we went over immediately to the office. And uh, we uh um, Charles Vanabro, my supervisor, and I um looked at Mr. Atencio to do, to um figure out if he was impaired, really impaired or not. And I like to preface this with um I have, I've been a EMT intermediate for almost twenty years uh when I was in Texas. And so I came upon, I came upon uh accidents and uh was called on many times to uh render a decision on whether a person was impaired or not, and so um, type that for what you know. But after looking at Robert and watching him, uh looking at his pupils, looking at his way he walked, the way he uh acted. Uh, he was not impaired at all.
And, thank you. And so um also around the time that Mr. Martinez received the text messages from Mr. Conrad. Um, accusing Mr. Atencio of being impaired was the time that apparently he also offered cannabis to Mr. Atencio and other coworkers, is that your understanding?
That's my understanding, yes.
And how did you come to learn about uh Mr. Conrad offering cannabis to the grounds crew?
Um, Sam uh told me about it, Mr. Martinez, and he told me about it, and uh also I heard it from uh Will uh William Jones too.
Um, did you talk to any of the grounds crew about these allegations?
I believe I did, but I don't recall.
Okay. Um, is, have you been present today throughout the testimony of everyone?
Everyone, yes.
Is what uh Sam Martinez, is what he told you about Mr. Conrad offering cannabis to the other grounds crew? Is that consistent with the testimony of him today?
It absolutely is.
Thank you, I have no fear of mistake, but hang on one second.
Oh, yes.
Ms. Conrad, do you have any questions?
What was the date that uh, that you heard that the cannabis was offered?
Um. I'm a s- I don't know, I'm a thinking, I'm thinking that it was around January tenth. That I don't recall.
Are there?
Long time ago.
Uh, do you move to a new position?
I have since, yes.
Okay, and um, what are you doing now?
I'm the OSHA compliance officer.
Okay, so you're over everybody now, um. We've, we talked, or is it getting closer to be um looked at as safety sensitive positions?
That is uh on my wish list, but it, nothing's been discussed yet.
And that, and one of the big problems is the use of marijuana, correct?
I don't know that for a fact, but
Well, can you?
I'm assuming it is.
Can you operate heavy equipment when you utilizing marijuana medically?
It doesn't matter if you're using it medically or not, it's, it's not a good idea to operate heavy.
It's not safe.
It's not safe.
Okay, do you feel that, that Mr. Conrad is a safety conscious person?
I feel that way, yes.
Do you feel that Mr. Conrad would use marijuana and heavy equipment if it jeopardized the safety of anybody?
I would hope not, but I can't say.
Can you say that for your other, for your former subordinates? Do you have that same belief?
I, I would object to this questioning on grounds of relevance.
It is wrong, but.
Um, I, I think so, yes, because a lot you, I don't know whether they have or not, I haven't they've never been tested, so I can't say yes or no.
Understood, but you really feel that to follow the OSHA standard, that the school really needs to start making sure that people are not on marijuana because of the federal code, you can't accommodate and follow the federal law, if the state law is, is uh, i- if it allows it, is that from your understanding? if it allows it, is that from your understanding?
That would be accurate, yes.
Then, and then one final question, did you do a lot of research on ADA since you've been on?
I've done some, yes.
So you, you would know where I was going.
I do.
I'm sorry I had to be the sacrificial lamb. Thank you, sir. It was a pleasure working with you.
Thank you, sir.
Any call, any redirect? Any questions from the board?
I have one for Lisa Maxwell, does this district have random drug testing? Does heavy equipment?
Not my knowledge.
You tested all sites random?
Only after accidents.
And after us?
Yes. And I don't know if it's policy or not, but it's, it's what I want to do.
So you just go by honesty? Niprofitalism in operating heavy equipment?
I guess, I don't know. I just, if it's not in their policy, then you know, I, I don't know. If, is it, is it in the board policy that to be tested after an accident?
Well, this isn't the form for that particularly, but yeah, that's a question that maybe the if the board decides they want to rest, they will definitely address it in, in the corporate form. Any other questions from board members? You're, you're absolutely mistaken.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Cole?
Not for this witness, I have one final witness. Last and not least, Mr. Nathan, Paris Tony.
Raise your right hand, please. You saw me swear the testimony about to give the truth, I hope truth is nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Maybe seating.
Thank you for being here, Mr. Paris Tony. Can you please introduce yourself to the board and tell them what your role is at the district?
My name is Nate Garantoni, I am the executive director of Human Resources and Support Services as of July one, twenty twenty five. I've worked here twenty years.
Can you please tell us what your other previous roles at the district government?
Teacher, coach, assistant principal, principal, assistant director, director, executive director, few things.
Are, are Arlington Municipal School District employees required to review the district policies each year?
Each year, they're expected to review and accept the terms of board policy and the code of ethics.
And how does the district know if the employees have that?
We track it electronically, so there's a professional developer, professional development delivery system that records everyone's responses, it's done electronically across the district at the beginning of each school year.
If you could please turn to exhibit seventeen. You know, what in front of you. Do you recognize what exhibit seventeen is?
Yes, this is the certificate of completion. It's automatically generated when any employee checks the box that they accept and have reviewed the terms of the code of ethics.
Great, and for this specific certificate, who, what, whose certificate is this?
Which Casey Conrad certificate for completing his annual code of ethics review.
And so so school health ethics policy G dash zero six five zero, which is also exhibit eleven. Would that policy have been reviewed by Mr. Conrad for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school year? If he has that certificate of completion that we just looked at?
Yes.
And exhibit twelve, which is school policy G dash zero seven five zero. Would that entire policy, including the provision stating that employees shall avoid conduct connected with official duties that is unfair and unlawful or gives the appearance of being improper or illegal? Would that have been reviewed by Mr. Conrad if he had that certificate?
The following certificate that attests to his board policy review, yes.
What is the following?
Uh, the second page of, yes, exhibit seventeen. Two back to back certificates, one for each.
And what is the third page of exhibit seventeen?
Third page is the training record generated for all employees. And so it identifies all of the annual training and the date of completion. It's just a way that we are able to document and monitor that all staff members are undergoing their annual training.
Thank you. I would like to move to the next exhibit seventeen.
No objection.
No objection.
Um, okay, exhibit sixteen as well. We could take a look at that. Can you please let us know what exhibit sixteen is?
Exhibit sixteen is the employee acknowledgement from twenty seventeen. Stating that Casey Conrad had reviewed and accepted the terms of the code of ethics. And, and or kind of sexual exploitation, bullying and cyberbullying, both cyberbullying policies dated one twenty seven seventeen.
And it's page two, something similar.
Image two is the same, this is from our previous monitoring system for the human resources department's way to ensure compliance across all the annual reviews that every employee does.
Thank you, I'd also need to fit in exhibits.
You have objections, Mr.?
I have concerns with the date. You referenced where some things weren't admissible because of being past a certain timeline, why wouldn't this, this was when I started?
Yeah, that what will be the purpose of the exhibit?
The purpose is just to show that Mr. Conrad has annually reviewed the the ethics policy since his employment began initially at Twosom.
Mr. Redon, he just actually testified to them that those Sam was annually. Board members can only be used for the idea that, for the proposition that it is that since he's been in code, he's had this time. Mr. Connor, are you going to challenge this on your side?
No, no, sir.
Okay. Then it can only be used that.
You don't lose ethics. You have.
Okay, so, uh, Mr. It can only be used to demonstrate that since he's been an employee, it's been yearly trained. That's all it's used for. Will that satisfy your objections, Connor? It has limited use.
I do have a question about this, is this applied to administrative staff?
Yes, yes, I guess it does.
So the superintendent has a, has signed this? I don't have that in front of me, that's fine, thank you, just wanted to make sure.
Thank you, Michael, proceed, it's admitted.
I have nothing further for you, thanks.
Mr. Connor, do you have any questions for Mr. Paratone?
Yes, do you, are you? Are you the, my two policies that I brought up, the G one thousand and the G nine fifty, are you aware of those?
Drug free workplace policy?
Yeah, yeah. And then the other one's kind of the same. Can you say that you follow those?
Yes.
Okay, so both of those policies to be in violation require possession. Do you, have you heard anything here today that indicates that Mr. Conrad has possessed marijuana on school property?
No.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any redirect?
I have redirect.
Any questions from the board members from Mr. Paratone? Do you have any more witnesses?
I have no more witnesses, all residents.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Paratone. Uh, Mr. Conrad, do you have any witnesses you would like to call?
Yeah, Sam, Sam Martinez.
Um, I did not receive a witness list.
Matthew Martinez, is he still here? I'm here, yes. Would you please step up, please?
Yes, sir.
You raise your right hand. Thomas, where the testimony about to give the truth, I hope truth is nothing but the truth?
Yes.
You have seating.
What date were you told that, uh, Mr. Conrad offered cannabis to the four individuals?
I believe it was the latter part of the day on January ten.
There, there's a ladder?
Ladder part, the ladder part of our workday.
What, do you have the number?
Like, right before we clock out for the day, between three and four o'clock, that window.
I'm assuming that you've moved into the role of, of the ground supervisor?
I am, I am.
Okay, congratulations. Are you familiar with the, the, the district's drug and alcohol policy?
I am, um, now I am familiar with it. I, there was kind of speculation, I know that before we didn't, we don't drug test unless there is an accident. I know that transportation does require randoms.
Yeah.
But I know that.
So things are changed since ten, ten of twenty twenty four?
And ten of twenty four?
When we, when we heard a rumor about alcohol consumption on school property?
I do not.
You don't recollect the, the four individuals that have testified against me for offering cannabis where?
Um, ten, ten of twenty four, I was not in the role that I am now, nor in the role that is in question.
So the role has to do with your ability to say what happened, what you heard happened around?
I don't, I don't recollect.
You don't recollect Mr. Santiago, Mr. Santiago Martinez using the Jeep before it had GPS? To go and get alcohol? And, and come back to the, to the plant operations?
I do not recollect.
You don't recollect that at all?
No.
Okay. And that, that they distributed that alcohol amongst themselves and drank it in front of the cameras?
I don't recollect that at all.
Recollect that at all?
No.
That, and then that, um, who, you don't recollect who caught them and tried to brush it under the rug, the administrative member?
I do not recollect any of this information at all.
Are you, is there any drug and alcohol problems going on under your?
Under my watch?
Under your department?
Under my watch, I would say no.
Under your watch, no, but what about before?
I cannot speak to that because I was not in that role before. So I don't, I wouldn't know, you'd have to ask James Haley or Alan if he suspected any of that.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any cross examination?
Um, yes, I'll, I'll have a few questions. So you were, well, okay, by whom were you informed in January of this year that Mr. Conrad offered alcohol, or I'm sorry, cannabis to his coworkers?
I was informed by the four gentlemen that had already spoke, Santiago, Damien, Robert and Will.
Did you find them to be credible when they were telling you this?
I did, everything was consistent, they didn't kind of, a couple of them came with me at a time and then the other ones kind of individually spoke about it and everything seemed to be consistent.
Did they seem concerned that this happened when they told you what happened?
They were, they were concerned about their, I guess, about themselves being in trouble, obviously. And felt uneasy about it. It kind of felt like it was like they were kind of being set up, is the word.
And what did you do when you learned this information?
I did the same as I did when Casey sent me the text messages, I passed it along to, uh, just in the whole chain of command thing.
Then, then who's your next in chain of command?
At the time, that was Alan, because he was the supervisor of grounds at that time.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any redirect, Mr. Conrad?
Um, no.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Martinez, your excuse?
Thank you.
Thanks. Do you have any other witnesses?
No.
With that being said, you can go to closing arguments, are you prepared to go forward with school, do you agree with closing our heads?
Sure.
All right, please, brevity is, is reported.
Okay, thank you. Board members, thank you again for next time here today. I would like to just clarify that the recommendation to terminate Mr. Conrad's employment was not because he was accused of being in possession of cannabis on the evening, nor that he failed the drug test or anything like that. This recommendation to terminate his employment was due to the very substantiated allegations that he offered cannabis to his coworkers on school grounds during working hours. We went over multiple district policies, ethics policies and standards of conduct, which the superintendent testified that Mr. Conrad's conduct violated. Basically, the essence of the recommendation to terminate Mr. Conrad's employment is that any offering of illicit substances on school grounds is just not, it, it's needs to be strictly prohibited, it cannot be tolerated. His conduct was very concerning to the superintendent, it was concerning to the foreground members who were offered the cannabis, it was concerning to the two supervisors of these individuals, and then it was concerning to the superintendent. Mr. Deal also testified that he does not take this decision lightly, he does not make the recommendation to terminate any employees of employment lightly, but in this case, he does recommend that Mr. Conrad's employment be terminated. Heard from many, many witnesses today about the facts surrounding the situation in which Mr. Conrad did offer cannabis to these four grounds crew members. All four of them said that this happened on school property and they confirmed to you here today that it happened, they confirmed to the investigator, Ms. Hawes, that this happened. And they also reported this to their supervisor, Sam Martinez, that this happened. It was not easy for them to come testify today, but they felt that this was an important reason to come and tell you that Mr. Conrad's employment should be terminated. And so I ask you, board members, to please uphold the superintendent's decision to terminate Mr. Conrad's employment for violating numerous school policies and offering an illicit substance on school campus. Thank you, or school grounds, excuse me. Thank you.
Mr. Conrad, you have a closing statement?
On February fourth, I was placed on administrative leave and explicitly prohibited from communicating with any district employees. This directive made it impossible to contact coworkers who speak on my defense or help challenge the allegations made against me, in effect silencing me and obstructing any meaningful participation in this process. Despite submitting multiple inquiries and formal grievances to my supervisor, district administrators and human resources, my concerns have been repeatedly ignored and dismissed without response. In contrast, the administration has given full weight and uncollaborated statements for individuals who hold personal animosity towards me, who have clear motives of retaliation. Furthermore, I was banned from school property entirely, even for personal or familiar, family related reasons which prevented me from attending my grandson's school event. This punitive action disguised as a standard administrative leave caused unnecessary personal harm and further isolation. The combined effect of these actions make it clear that I have not been treated fairly. Rather than conducting an impartial investigation, the district appears to be pursuing a retaliatory claim under false pretenses that employ misconduct. I have suffered reputable harm, emotional distress and a denial of basic due process. All while those responsible for unethical behavior remain protected. In conclusion, the allegations are false and they were created for retaliatory purposes that this administration has had nothing better. that this administration has had nothing better than to embrace and to capture and utilize it because there's something going on here. There's something deeper going on here and it is drug use and it is happening at our schools and alcohol use. I hope you find the courage to investigate that. Thank you.
Members of the board, it's now time for deliberation. I only have one comment to do that before we move on. Um, under statute, the superintendent has the final decision as regards to personnel. This is an appeal. So this is within your statutory authority to hear the appeal and to have a way to either affirm the decision or reject the decision and reinstate the employee. Um, though it's time to put deliberations, I would, I do not know if the board is gonna be making the decision today. However, if they do it today, they will, they will come reconvene and they will make a decision in an open, in an open session. Uh, if they are not prepared, they have five business days to uh working days to make the decision and I will come out and let you guys know uh that the, the, that the board will come out and continue the meeting to another date. But at this point, uh, Madam Vice President, deliberation time.
Okay, do we need a motion to go?
No, we're already, we're already in the meeting.
Okay.
You're just gonna go to the, you are just gonna go to the.
Okay, it makes sense for us to go deliberate in the conference room.
Yes, do we have space for a, take a week?
Right.